Joint Plan and Commission, please come to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here to sitting. Would you please stand for the pledge of a flag? George, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think you need to raise the United States flag because it's lower than the state flag.
Yep.
Only like a few years ago, just noticed.
It looks like it's falling.
Sagging.
Like everybody else.
It's crying.
Let the records reflect the members that's present. The commission members should have received the minutes for August 29, 2016. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
No, sir.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Carrie, thank you. Delegation in action, none. Ordinants and agreements for review. Ordinance 26, 2016, vote to board sign. Vote to board sign incorporating electronic message board display signs. Jim, want to get us started on that?
Well, as we said last month, you've got another crack to take a look at it, see if there's anything that you think needs to be changed, and we can give a recommendation to the mayor and council. If you like it as is, we can either, you know, offer no comment, provide a comment that they, a recommendation that they pass the ordinance, whatever the commission chooses. Hopefully, you guys will like it because it's the result of our discussion. Over the last couple of months, the mayor and council didn't direct any changes to it.
Okay. Any comments or anything from the commission? Not, let's start with maybe a motion that was recommended passed.
I make a motion if we adopt it so that we can discuss it.
Ah, adopt it so we can discuss it. Can you rephrase that a little bit?
Yeah.
That may be a little confusing. You just changed that to make a motion and a recommendation that the city council approves?
It's an amendment to the sign ordinance incorporating electronic message display boards.
Okay, is there a second to that?
A second.
Okay. Still not clear, but. Any discussion on it? Any comments from the floor? County?
Just a little thing, there will be a public hearing on it at the mayor council's workshop on October 5th. So there may be comments from the public or, you know, those who hope to employ such a sign.
And that'll be at the regular time at 7:30? Not hearing any comments. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Carrie, thank you.
Jim, moving on into your report. All righty. Well, the first thing, aside from the sign ordinance, was I talked a little bit about the community village overlay. I'd like to kind of defer that for later in the agenda when we actually, you know, have it on there for discussion time.
Okay.
But the other thing that was on my report, we had some interest in a downtown building a few months ago, and that didn't pan out, but it brought to light a number of questions regarding downtown part. The potential buyers of the property wanted to create four new apartment dwellings in the building. And our code makes apartments more difficult to do in the downtown business district. There's a special exception, you say they have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so, again, that was because we have a lot of apartments downtown and we didn't want to make it, you know, continue to be easy to convert more properties into more apartments. The code, under the special exception portion of the code, speaks to conversion of a single-family house into apartments, but it doesn't talk about converting a commercial building into apartments. Where it does talk about converting a house into apartments, it talks about providing parking per the, you know, regulations of that section of the code. That section of the code was updated more recently than the special exception part, where now we have an exemption for existing buildings in the downtown district with regard to parking. So if I open up a store next door, I don't have to meet the parking requirements because it's an existing building. And I'm questioning the parking requirements for new dwellings downtown and the sequence of, the timing of when those sections of the code were updated. The one that speaks to providing parking for converting a house into apartments predates the exemption for existing buildings. And I suspect we just didn't put it all together. But I wanted to get some comments or some thought, and it's not something I have to, you know, hear back tonight. There's not like a big pressing issue. But this interest in the building at the time really brought up a lot of questions with regard to, you know, parking and the process to create a new apartment and all kinds of things like that. So I'd like you guys to give that some thought. And maybe we'll talk about it in a future month. I don't know if it's something that we're going to jump into code revisions on, you know, for the one or two buildings that aren't already some kind of a dwelling that potentially could be. But then again, I'm just looking at what's vacant right now. I guess we couldn't tell down the road if another commercial building might want to be converted, somebody might want to convert it into apartment dwellings. So just something to think about. We were kind of in a position where we would have had to make a call if, you know, if the purchase of the building had gone through and they had been able to, or willing to pay the impact fees to create the new dwellings and everything, and that didn't happen. But it'd be nice to know for next time how we want to handle the parking. So if you guys could give that some thought. I did give you the dates that things were updated in my report and such. It's, again, it's the special exception section of the zoning chapter and also the parking section. And if you'd like, I can give you excerpts of those next month or something if we might want to talk about it.
Okay, just to help us out in the meantime. So take a house and convert it into apartments. How many parking spots per apartment if you convert a house?
Three per dwelling unit. Apartments may be...
Wasn't they going to buy a parking lot though to have parking? Wasn't this outfit going to buy a parking lot in town to have parking?
They were proposing...
Just as a little information.
That was, they were, they were proposing a lot of, a lot of stuff. They were going to buy other properties and...
They were trying to reminisce.
And renovate other properties that, to the best of my knowledge, aren't on the market at the moment.
But that parking, they were going to purchase for their business.
Yeah.
So do we allow off-lot parking for apartments?
The general parking requirements just say residential, three spaces for each dwelling unit.
Okay.
And that's just the general zoning code, that's not...
I don't see what you're saying, whether it's one side or opposite.
Right.
So...
Because if they could buy a piece of ground somewhere on the back street or something and use that as considered as a parking space.
Would you want to walk that far? Would you want to work that far?
Well, it depends, we don't know how close it is. I mean, I'm just trying to get enough ideas so that we have enough to think about between now and the next time we meet. And for us to pull up online all this information, it's good just to make little notes and think about it now so we have it.
A lot of places do that. Like they would say, in downtown areas where you're not going to get a parking space, you're just not going to do it because there's no place to do it. So they may go to like the local church, and they say, "I want to rent three spaces from you, and I have to walk down the street to do that." And the church is fine with that and everything. And then you really have to put the pressure on the landlord that gets the tenant to park there because the tenant doesn't want to walk all the way down there. They want to park on the street, and then you got to ticket it on the street. The issue that we were running in this hypothetical one was the landlord was going to have parking for their business, and you'd have to tell the tenant, "No, you can't park there in the business spot because I was going to have a commercial business as well." And that's, how do you do that? I mean, the landlord has to do that. You all have to decide. But that comes back to the issue of, "I don't really need parking for my business downtown."
But I bought a nine-unit here in town and also bought an acre of ground for the parking for it.
And you tell your tenants...
Somebody said no.
Right, but you tell your tenants that's where you got to park, or that's where you can park if you want.
That's where they need to park and want to park, so...
So like if somebody would want to buy the Fuss Building down there and buy the old Creamery, make the Creamery the parking lot, we could get rid of the Creamery. And they have parking.
We can park there.
Pardon me?
That's a city, so we can park there.
I mean, I'm just, those are big examples, and that's something to think about.
If you didn't make, let's do it the other way. If you didn't make a landlord provide parking, and they could do just through parking, you know that a tenant's going to have at least one car, maybe per person, not. They're going to park on the street.
Right.
And you're going to have an enforcement issue.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, it's the same things we've gone through.
Unfortunately, that's something you can't control because they do it now.
Well, but when you allowed the landlord to rent his place, you created the ability to have a parking spot. Whether they use it or not is irrelevant. If you didn't make the landlords provide some sort of parking, then you're de facto saying you're going to let them do it on the street.
Right. Thing goes without saying, we definitely want them to provide off-street parking for everything.
Okay.
So that will come back to you at some future time. I guess we'll talk a little bit about what would have to change to ensure that, you know, if we do create new additional dwelling units downtown, that we do address parking for those dwellings.
Well, in addition to parking, how about a large floor space in a ground-floor building if it became vacant?
That's exempt.
You going to let them go into apartments? Eliminate space for downtown business?
Well, if there are, if there is a commercial building that, and we, somebody mentioned the Fuss Building, that's a great example. There's apartments upstairs currently, and the downstairs historically has been commercial use. To create a new dwelling requires sprinkling the area. So even though it's an existing building, if it was never a dwelling before, now it's going to have to have a fire sprinkler system installed. So that's kind of a deal breaker for a lot of people because that gets you into some plumbing issues and things like that that you otherwise might not have to get. Supply line size and meter size and stuff like that. It's not as easy as just saying, "Oh, you know, I'm going to, you know, install a bathroom and now it's going to be an apartment." But I don't think we have an obligation on that happening. So if somebody could do it, it may not be a practical thing for somebody to do, but...
Well, I'm thinking it could, who knows? I'm just thinking it could do away with space for stores eventually. Much of that happened.
So that may be, you know, something to consider down the road as well, especially for the downtown district where there's more pressure for residential, I guess, than commercial, you know. It varies, but, you know, we see times when all the storefronts are filled and we see times when there's a bunch of empty ones. Or, you know, people are paying the rent, but they're not doing anything with them. So it's, downtown's always, always fun. But we'll come back on the parking question for the apartments with maybe some actual update.
Okay, that's good to have. Moving on to your next item.
Before you go off this, I just ask you a question, Jim. The feasibility that we were just talking about was hinged on a sprinkler system using the current technology. Do you know in the fire world that there's some other technology that may be coming down? You don't need that kind of stuff?
Either wet or dry system. That's about it.
No thoughts in the future?
Nobody, nobody, hasn't been brought, anything brought to us at the fire department about it. But it's usually, as of right now, it's either a wet or a dry system.
Before we move on, can I ask a question, Jim White?
Sure.
Thank you. Jim, I have a question about, there was a structure that appeared behind the Erie Insurance business. It's awful large for the size of the property there. Was that permitted? Was it?
Yeah, it's a couple doors up from Erie Insurance. Actually, no, it's next door to it.
It's next door, I think, right?
Next door. Yeah, and it's a, they're doing a, basically, there's a block building in the rear yard, and they're doing a kind of a pole building addition to that building. So it doesn't take up more than a third of the rear yard, so it's size-wise. It's a big building, but within code.
Building's huge, but, okay. Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
One last little tidbit. After I did the report, we have had a couple more new homes permitted. Couple more in Meadowbrook were permitted after this was printed, so. So we've got three this month.
Okay. And moving on into the active projects. Any discussion on any of those?
Well, I'll skip Meads for right now because Steve Smith is here and has some information he'd like to share with you. Meadowbrook is chugging away. I'm not sure if anybody has driven out there to take a look at things. There are two homes under roof, two more permitted now. And it sounds like they're starting to gear up to get 4B started, to do the public works agreement and stuff for that. So that will probably be recorded in the not-too-distant future. Creekside, we had some communication with the developer and owner. The former owner, Lenar, is bulking at the sidewalk requirements and the cost of the sidewalk that Corin Development is passing on to them. So Corin, who's the developer, who are the ones we've been dealing with, you know, basically throughout the project, even though it's been sold a couple times, they're trying to get the sidewalk built. But Lenar, who was the owner, is kind of dragging their feet on approving, spending the money to build the sidewalks. So they posed the question if the city would be interested in doing the project and then, you know, billing them for it. And I expressed that we do not really want to do that. So we're still dragging along on the sidewalk issue. They should be doing some additional landscaping in the next month or so now that the weather's cooled down a little bit, a little better time to plant. So the trees that were going to go along the water tower are mostly going to go along the sidewalk that connects out to Baltimore Street. And of course, they still have the driveway question for that property adjacent that, so that they can access the garage. So they are making some, a little bit of progress, but the sidewalk is still, you know, at this rate, I don't know if it's going to go in before winter or not. They did, however, get us a letter from their engineer that, you may recall, we had the deep manholes and the huge easement across a few of the lots. Their engineer did come back with an opinion that the easement could be reduced by 10 feet on, I think it was on either side. So it looks like the folks who basically have no usable backyard will be able to use a little bit of their backyard now. So we wanted to have something from their engineer that said, you know, excavation will, you know, not require the full 60-foot easement. So, because we have a few lots out there where basically the easement is within two or three feet of their back of the house. So that'll be some relief for those, you know, those few homeowners.
Jumping back to sidewalk, just a second. Do we have people living in a house that doesn't have the sidewalks?
Yeah, yeah, one of them, I think they're both rental properties that are occupied.
Keep talking about Baltimore Street.
Yeah, they're on Baltimore, they're not part of Creekside.
Okay.
Right, they were existing dwellings, but they were... On the front side, the sidewalks are supposed to be in the state highway right-of-way. So the owners, the owners have been cooperative with it. But it's going to involve, you know, regrading part of their front yards and things like that, or else construction of a retaining wall, which is not the preferable option for anybody, really. And it's just, you know, much more involved, and that's probably why it was, why it hasn't happened yet. So I know that both property owners have at least verbally agreed to the idea of, you know, giving a revertible construction easement to, you know, on their front lawns and a grading easement so that they can be sloped off, so the sidewalks can be constructed. I don't know if either has signed anything at this point, but...
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, they're chipping away. And on the rear, where there's also supposed to be a sidewalk along Break Iron Street, I think you may recall, we agreed with the idea of flipping it from the water tower side to the other side. That's still, that's still on city property because Break Iron Street doesn't go all the way to the boundary line. You may recall from many years ago, that was actually a city parcel that was crossed with Break Iron Street. So the city owns, you know, a little strip on the Baltimore Street side of Break Iron, and that's where the sidewalks are planned on for the Break Iron piece.
Okay.
Carol, this is Phase 4, and not a whole lot to report there. Just, you know, they're still pulling, you know, one or two building permits a month. They're down to, I believe, eight, eight units now. And once those eight are down, we'll need to, I suppose, as part of the closeout process, they had, they have an extra 10 EDUs for Phase 4 that I guess was supposed to be a cushion in the event that they had to do another redesign or something like that if things didn't go well with Phase 4. You know, at this point, they're pretty much, you know, down to the last few houses. So I can't imagine why they would, why we would need to continue holding those EDUs. So that'll, I would imagine, be part of our closeout. So we'll get some EDUs back to the city at that point. And that's about it. So if we want to turn things over to Steve for a little update on Meads Crossing.
Just one, before we jump there, since your sheet is right there. Did you get a chance to look at that sign on Lorian?
I did.
What does it mean?
It made me smile.
George is, it's close to George's manhole, so I didn't know.
They gave permission for the shopping center to connect. I mean, they, you know, along with the property owners of the Sheets parcel, you know, are the ones who have the right to that Road A. They gave permission for Canavago contractors to make the connection, to, you know, provide that access point. So it is a directional sign. It's not a commercial sign. You know, obviously, it's intending to not, you know, to discourage people from cutting through. But it's not a traffic control device. It's not a public street. So I'm not sure if we will end up doing anything with that or not.
I have no issue with it. It's just, it just popped up there. We went through a lot of trouble to get that street to go through there. And all once there's a sign, you know, discouraging, so...
Right, I just thought it was interesting that, you know, they had to say it was okay before it could connect.
Right.
So it just seems a little, as I said, it made me smile. I just thought it was a little bit funny that they're posting the sign now.
Okay, thanks. All right. So we want to move to Meads Crossing, is it at this time? Jim? Okay.
Just a quick update. The construction documents with the city engineer review, we're waiting to get those back. He's got the package. We had a meeting of our city official work group about two weeks ago, where it was just developers without the builder in the room. And I felt like we had some previous interaction on what we needed to do. We had been working with the builder. We may have had a breakthrough moment on Friday. I don't know yet, but I was told that we were going to see some movement. I had not seen that yet. So we're not going to bring anything to you until we feel somewhat comfortable with it. And I think what we'd like to do is probably share with the work group first and then, and then bring it. We're working on it. I think we understand the issues.
Okay, your work group, is you're in work group or is Jim part of that and the city manager?
It's Carter, it's Row, and Brad.
And myself, I was with that group as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you, we're looking forward to seeing what comes back to us.
Looking more forward to shovels than the ground.
Okay. Legal update, Jay?
We're going to hopefully pass the sign. There's going to be the public hearing, and then the plan is to pass it right then, at the next, their work session or the regular session. If you all want to attend and express your concern. Normally, when these things are vetted through the council, it comes to you. There's really not that much discussion. That is not the case with this. There seems to always be this. Anything you might want to offer would be great if you want to come to the meeting and offer it.
Okay.
Are you talking about the fifth?
Yes.
Okay.
Regardless of the facts.
Just the facts, ma'am.
Well, well said.
Is there more, or shouldn't I ask?
It was well said.
That's fine, okay. Anything else, Jay? Scott?
Just one very brief item. It's that time of year where we're going to water and sewer amendments. We do a kind of fall cycle and a spring cycle each year. That's a calendar, something to update, or if one of the towns has something to amend. Since the state is going to try to add anything to the council now.
We don't have anything, right, Jay? Or Jim?
Just probably updating 4A of Meadowbrook to existing service rather than it's in the plan's priority. So we just need to coordinate that little update now that it's actually built. So, and then we'll have the same thing with 4B, you know, probably this time next year. So, but nothing, nothing substantial, really.
Okay. Okay, so I guess we're moving on to community village ordinance discussion. And I think everyone should have had a copy of it in their packet or two. May I start out with Henry? You want to say a few comments and get us started here?
Yeah.
Since you were, you were the mayor at that time, right?
Yeah, I was. And just some thoughts that I kind of anticipated would come out of this. I really wanted to have, you know, one of the, one of the goals I sought in this thing was to be able to have a designation that would allow some creativity for the developer. Because our, one of the things that we were seeing was is that you have... Some were very rigid in all their zones. Subdracks, front, side, back. And there's, there was some, you know, talk about moving those houses off. You're trying to break off the house, you know. We started to look like cookie cutter. And so the idea behind the community village was we create a place where people... And so the idea behind the community village was we create a place where people would want to have some amenities aligned with that, as far as, you know... And so the goal was to have, it was more of having this creativity to take a piece of land and mold it in some fashion that it was a lot more attractive than what we've been doing in the past. And also gave the opportunity for a bit of negotiations, too. And basically, the negotiations, as I envisioned, would be, you took this land, it was R10, and it would yield so many houses. You would then say, well, okay, if we configure the houses in this way, then there was the ability for the planning zone group to sort of negotiate with the builder and the developer that for, you know, for more density, you get these amenities. And that was really the goal of the initial community village, the premise of, you know, how it's developed after that, you know. You know, I don't know. But that's kind of where, you know, I saw it going years ago, was that you're going to give a piece of land where between the planning zone and the developer, you come up with a community that was a little bit more eye pleasing than the cookie cutters that we've been doing.
Okay. Jim, I think you were on the committee, right? To put this together, was working on this, can you...
What Henry said is the exact truth. We did this because we wanted to have the town to have more choices in what they could do for developers. Because what was happening is they were going to slap up the same house, and it was just going to be a cookie cutter arrangement. So by having a community village, it allows the town to have more control over the environment, and allows the builder to get a deeper density so he can make some more money. And sometimes use that money into urban park spaces, unique things with swimming pools, railings, a variety of things you could do to make the property look nicer. We even took a ride and visited some communities down in Montgomery County, Ferri County, where they had a variety of styles of homes, some two-story colonials.
I don't think so.
Red townhomes with work done on the front to make it look a little better than brick or stone. So the objective, what I felt during the whole meeting, was to make sure that the town had some response, had some way of being able to control what the place looked like. With the fair development, we didn't have any control at all. When you build a house, it had to be a house with somebody's square feet. So this was excellent.
How'd you like this? Want the results?
You talking about what we have in front of us?
Yeah.
This is what they created, or what they worked on and developed?
That's tough.
Pardon me?
It's tough. Really tough.
You'd like to address a little bit more what you're saying is tough, you mean to accomplish?
Yeah.
For the developer?
Yeah, I think that... Well, what we had, one of the big things we had talked about during that period of time was to have alleys, to make the place look better by no parking in front of the houses. But at this particular time, I think the alleys would be, not be, the builder would not be able to build financially. But what we were originally talking about is the crisis of 2008 didn't occur. So we were looking at things, the other people had opportunities to build this, but just look and get some benefits from, after it was built, get some benefits financially.
Just let me back up a little bit. The reason I was looking for some discussion on this is, you know, with Carol Vista kind of winding down, you know, they were the first community that went through the community village ordinance. And, you know, they're on, so we've, you know, we've got one project on the ground, almost finished now. You know, the Phase 4 piece, you, most of you will recall, they, you know, reimagined that phase, you know, from the original community village plan. And now, of course, we've got Meads with, you know, redesign going on, you know, currently as well. But there have been some comments with regard to, you know, the intent of community village or whether community village ordinance is a good thing or not, or whether it's, you know, I guess buildable or profitable at this point in time. But I wanted everybody to take a look at the ordinance and try to get a better feel for what the intent was. For one thing, so that we don't go running and saying, oh, well, Carol Vista didn't do alleys, Meads Crossing didn't do alleys, we need to change it. You know, several years ago, when Meads was here, the market was different, and this was very feasible at that point in time. It isn't right now, it isn't today, but that's not to say that it might not be another 10 years from now. So I really want everybody to take a look at it and have some discussion on what, after looking at the code, you know, what does the, what is the community village aesthetic, you know, to you guys? And I think that's been hopeless when, you know, right now, Meads, for example, is, you know, the construction drawings are under review by CDM. But at some point, you'll have, you know, new plans in front of you, and, you know, there may be things that, you know, have benefited from this review and discussion. You know, there may be ideas that you come up with that might help, you know, with Meads with not having reality, where something, someone tweaked it, we would have been more of a community village and less of a standard subdivision. So again, there have just been some comments over the last several months about community village that I pick up as being kind of negative in terms of about the existing ordinance. And I don't want to jump into, you know, saying, oh, this is bad because we've had, you know, two strikes now. As I said, this may not be the time for somebody to build alleys and be able to make money. But that doesn't mean that the concept is bad. So I was hoping that, you know, everybody could throw some thoughts on the table as to what, you know, what is community village to you guys? What should it look like? You know, what makes it different than, you know, you can do small lots, you can do townhouses in R6000. So what makes a community village different than an R6000 neighborhood? You know, you can do the variety of housing. You have very small lots in R6000. What makes a community village different, or what should make a community village different in your eyes? So that's what I'm hoping to kind of get a little bit of discussion or thoughts on tonight. And I don't want to, well, if folks aren't ready to jump in, I'm hoping everybody will be ready to jump in.
Well, what I, one of the things that, and I have to say, I'm a little disappointed with this one, and it worked both ways. We saw Carol Vista, and they did a, I'm going to call it the impact free, park impact fee. It's really not, we've always talked about it like that, but it's probably not what the real name is. But they got a reduced impact fee, because now they're not going to use the tennis courts.
Right.
But by the other hand, now, once you start to reduce and compact this housing, you're going to have more open space. And right now, you know, I'm not pointing fingers at Meads Crossing, but Meads Crossing has enough open space that they're not required to contribute. Now, the problem I see with that is, that's great that you have that local community, that you have those local parks, you have that local, but those kids grow up, and they're not taught something anymore. They're going to be using our facilities, and they're going to overwhelm our facilities in the future. So we need to kind of think about somehow adjust that or correct that. And so, like I said, I'm not against having the local thing, because I'm actually the favorite having, quote, "tow lots" in communities. And when, you know, Tuckey Park is an example of that, you know, where, you know, the idea for that was simply that you could have a neighborhood park where mothers could, little swings for tots, and that's why I prefer them as tow lots. When you get into the organized sports, they're going to be using the big fields. And that's where, you know, we don't have any adjustment for that.
So what you're saying is, to allow them to do certain items, they need to add something for these, our major, our parks, our ballfields, our diamonds and stuff?
Oh, yeah.
Which compensate us in some way to be able to maintain or improve what we have?
Well, yeah. It's, you know, I guess it's kind of like rolling pains. When you, right now, with Meads Crossing, you see that they provided with that stuff, with the small amenities, the local amenities, but failed, you know, to, we failed to kind of take care of the impact this community is going to have in 10, 12 years when those kids are 10, 12 playing, you know, baseball, soccer, all those sports that require big fields.
So if they have extra green space, and I'm just using it for example, why couldn't we put a soccer field out there, or something, or another ball diamond?
Okay. Because that's a closed community, in the sense that, you know, would it be for the public? And that's one of your questions, too, like the swimming pool, that's not going to be for...
It does not benefit the city, correct.
Right. So we need to think about those things in the future. If we, you know, I have no problem with a soccer field in a community like that, but does it really, does it really fit in a community like that? I don't know. What we need to think about, those kinds of things.
So what would, what would not allow the public to use them? Just because it's a closed HOA development?
That property is going to be operated and taken care of by their HOA. It's not the city. So if, you know, I, these are just things that's got to be worked out somehow, if that's the direction to go.
Well, if we put trails out through there, if they put the trails in, could those trails be tied into the other developments, and kids could ride their bike from one development to another one?
That would be my goal.
And that wouldn't be an issue?
Right. That's not a problem.
Right, that wouldn't be a problem.
No, but somebody from the minority village riding their bike through, or going down there?
I think one of the problems when you deal with the open space aspect, I mean, I know we focus on that, is it just doesn't fit with the city's plan. It's not cost effective. If they had a field out there developed, so they have a soccer field, even if it's big enough to be a soccer, whatever field, there's one field out there, there's no parking for it, right? I mean, there's, so you're going to, what are you going to do for that? When, and in some towns, that's what they do, they have little fields they plan for and things. But we have a rec plan, if you will, that has a huge park, that has a second park that can be put onto it. And so in our money, we'd want to invest it in a common place where it's easy to take care of, it's got the facilities, it's got the parking. And what Henry's, I guess, saying is that new developments, like the Mountain Brook one, they have community village designation, they should then be required not only to provide with their little parks that you could walk to, but provide for the overall things, like Brad's saying, to fit into our scheme.
Well, couldn't we add, couldn't there be a fee put onto that per unit, or something like that, that would help to cover for when we expand our park down there with the restrooms and Phase 2 and 3, whatever we want to do down there?
And we can.
Impact fee or something like that?
You know, in the future, I guess.
Right. Because, and then again, that's, I don't want to get too legal on us, but we talk about the park impact fee that people pay, okay? That's not really an impact fee. Okay? He throws it out there.
I think the wrong term.
But no, 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 what you're saying is the right term. The reason that some developers pay and some people don't is it's a fee in lieu of. And there's a calculation that if you have so much open space that you say, here, we have, we provide this open space, then we don't have to pay you money because we provide it our own. And the reality is, a lot of times, that open space or amenity is closed, or is not really, like Carol Vista paid a reduced fee because they had open space and a clubhouse and a pool, but you can't use it, okay? So the reality is, we need to implement a park impact fee that says, regardless of what you're going to provide, because when you provide stuff in your development, it makes people want to live there. So you're helping sell your own thing. Regardless of what you do, you have to pay us for the impact, because if you have two kids, those kids are eventually going to make it to Memorial Park and eventually be impacting us. We don't have that. But everyone should do that, regardless of whether it's community village or not.
Yeah, and I agree. But it shows up very clearly in this one, we're telling the developer that we could, you know, choose density of homes, and that means that you're going to have a lot more open space. But, you know, it fails to address the youth as they grow into organized sports.
And I think the park impact fee is a fine idea, but I think at the same time, you could give them the option of doing something with our parks, instead of giving us money, they do a project at the park, which I think would be just as beneficial as giving us money.
Good idea.
Well, you're right, because we got additions.
We have a whole half of that park, we're not even doing anything with it.
We got like three phases yet, and we haven't...
I understand that.
Right, and, you know, there is the catch. The catch is that we have, down here, adjacent to Memorial Park, about 20 years ago, we brought, we bought, I don't know how many acres we bought down.
Twenty-some.
But it's 20 years ago, and we haven't done a thing with it. And the reason we haven't done anything with it is because they didn't get the money. And then we thought, well, the park impact would help do that. And now, you know, we see that's, you know, not clearly happening.
So when the developer comes in like that, they already have the contractors and all that stuff, that would be a time for them to put up their restrooms or something, because they already got the manpower and the contractors available, because they'd be on site. So if we could plan far enough ahead to be able to synchronize what they're doing with our plans, and I'm not sure where we are with our plans, you know...
Well, it depends on which plan and which park you're talking about.
Well, either way, I thought the restrooms were somewhere close to, and I'm just using that for example. But there could be other things, I mean, this could be the skateboard thing up here, or something like that, I mean, I'm just...
That, I mean, that's the deal, that's the idea of community village. I mean, community village is a name to it. What it means to us, aside from what you see built, is the ability to negotiate what you want. Because the developer says, here's my zoning, and here's my way I can calculate it out, how many lots I can build. And I really don't need a lot of input, and I'm going to build it without anything, and you get basically the vanilla rate. So it's in their incentive and in yours to negotiate, and you get more things when you negotiate. I mean, I just had a client that just adopted one of these ordinances last year, because they had a big parcel in their downtown that they wanted to build, and they wanted mixed use, not mixed housing types, but commercial, they wanted residential, mixed in, they wanted really dense stuff. They wanted it, because they didn't want a lot of houses spread out downtown. And to do that, they needed to have smaller streets, and they needed to have other types of things. So they basically said, here's the parameters, like Rockville, it's a one-page ordinance, everything's negotiated, pretty much. And at the end, you tell the developer, well, we'll give you a density bonus, but we're going to need these things in return. And if you don't want it, you get, you still get your other thing over here. My thought is, our community village ordinance has been a success. I mean, Carol Vista is a success for what, it was designed for them, okay? And what they built out there was what they wanted, what we agreed to, and it seems to work for what it is. But it was a senior community. Now our buildings are talking to be about like a life cycle community with different housing types, different types of properties where you might buy at different ages. And the one thing our ordinance doesn't take into account, in my opinion, is reality. We can talk about like the housing types and what they look at, and my thought would be, every development in town, we just don't have that many right now, should have awesome housing types. You know, should, they, when we saw, we saw those pictures up here, and was like, we don't like the way they look. You only saw the front of the houses. Everybody should have nice houses in town, because they all look nice. What we should be talking about with community village and other places do is basically saying, all right, we live in a rural area. Now, the place that just adopted it is in Montgomery County, it's 10 minutes from the metro, okay? Has bus service. You might not need a car, you really could live there and walk to get to the thing. And when you get on the metro, you're going to work in DC or Northern Virginia, and you're going to make a lot of money, so you're able to pay for a place that costs... So you're able to pay for a place that costs. Their townhouses in that town start at $700,000 for a townhouse. If you have the same type of city feel, and I forget the name of the place that we, everybody copied back in Montgomery County, the Kentlands. Everybody wanted to build the Kentlands when this came out. Well, in the Kentlands, you can walk everywhere because you, you could walk to the grocery store, the restaurant, it's the nice little city environment. If you built that here, you, you still gotta drive somewhere to work in order to afford this. And the thing that I say reality is, sometimes you have to look at what we are, what we hope to be, is that if I could afford a $700,000 townhouse, I'm gonna buy it ten minutes from the metro stop, so I'll be home in thirty-five minutes from work. But if I can't afford a $700,000 townhouse, I gotta buy it further away from where I work. That's where we are.
And you can see that happening right on 795 Owens Mills. That, that used, that used to be a huge empty parking lot. They went into a, negotiations with the developer, and they don't have houses there. They have more like apartments, and they have condos and condos. But they've got, they've got a big mix. They also have restaurants right there.
Stores.
And you, right, you walk to the metro. So there's, it can be done. I mean, and again, it's, it's, it's a, you know, I think Jay's a little, you know, not a little bit, pretty much on track, we gotta take a look at ourselves and what are we? You know? I don't think, for the life of me, I don't think that, you know, as far as like the parking aspect, we're never gonna get away from that. You know? I remember when my kids were growing up, there's nothing here. I always gotta get in the car, go someplace. And it's true. And it was true for them, and it's true now. You wanna go to the movie? Pick your choice, you go to Hannover, you go to Westminster, or maybe Frederick.
Ginnisburg.
Ginnisburg.
Ginnisburg, that's Frank.
Everywhere but here.
Yeah, pretty much. We gotta think about those things.
So you're saying we should have developers build us a movie theater?
Well-
They'd have to run it too, subsidize it.
Maybe we should have, um, what do I want to say? A four-year, your four-year budget plan of what you're planning for the future, for the next four years of what, what you want for your amenities or whatever? For twenty town, I mean-
A plan, you mean a plan?
Well, a plan, but if we knew the budget that they were planning on down the road three or four years ago, now, I mean, two, two or three years from now, they were planning on doing something at the park. Or if the swimming pool thing ever comes alive again. You know? If that was something in the budget, even if it's a ten-year plan or something like that, to give us an idea of what-
We are working right now on a twenty-five-year plan.
Well, that would be nice for the commissioner to get a, we used to get a copy of the-
Oh, we're not finished yet, but you will.
Well, you still should have one, you should be always working on one.
Looking at the land then?
So there should be something right now on the books now.
Are you looking at the land?
Land or whatever.
You gotta have the land.
I mean, we got land.
Part of the plan is acquisition.
Right.
Just thoughts.
All right. Well, getting, getting back to the community village piece, there, there is language in there with regard to the open space about determining, you know, which, which open space is gonna be deeded to the city as public open space or public facilities. The idea of, of active recreation, the ball dimes, the soccer fields, lacrosse fields, all that stuff. There's, those types of facilities take up so much space when you figure, you know, soccer, you know, plays on Saturday. How many teams play at once? How many fields do you need? Where are you gonna park those people? That kind of a facility really doesn't, unless we're looking at, you know, you know, some hundreds of acres kind of parcel, which we don't really have. You know, I mean, a hundred acre parcel is big for us. You know, that would take such a huge chunk out of the community. It's probably a non-starter to really think about having that kind of a, an active recreation facility, you know, in a community village. You can do it, but it's probably not, it's not gonna happen. You know, because it, just because of the amount of space it would take up. You know, so, and, you know, just to use Meads as an example, you know, they've got open space that's gonna serve that community. But, you know, when we were back at the concept stage, we never really, you know, went to Meads Crossing and said, we need ten acres of your parcel for, you know, two soccer fields and parking lot and a small, uh, parking lot. You know, we just, that, that just wasn't even something to come on the table. You know, and also, of course, we, at that point, we're thinking we were gonna develop our twenty-two acres of Memorial Park.
Well-
Well, we still got the ball in our parks right out there too. That, I mean, that just stands to, what, because of funds? Or because we don't know what we want to do?
Well, there's-
Flood area.
Really good hill. No, you know, you're right, we've got, we've got- We annexed it.
That was, that was the-
Oh, we are moving, right, we did annex it, right.
Just annexed a hundred acres.
You know, if you're really thinking plans for houses and that sort of thing, what about restaurants and shopping? You're gonna need the very same thing in that area. Shopping, restaurants, to take care of these people if you're gonna get that large eventually.
I, and I-
Space.
I'd love to see that.
I, I agree with you. I think some of the, some-
Gotta work in and out.
Thoughts of, quote, a community village, maybe, yeah, retail in there.
Yep.
Because otherwise, what's happening right now is, as we grow, you know, you're car dependent.
You got the whole works, shopping centers, restaurants, I don't know about, motels. We can't even put anybody in a seatbelt when you're talking about-
Those things are-
The whole thing, you know?
I don't think that those would be in a community village.
Yeah.
Okay, so Jim, you want to-
What I talk, what I think is, is certain areas that, you know, could, that could function as like buzzy bears used to be.
Yep.
Yeah. A general store.
Certainly, that's more of a scale of what could potentially locate in a community village. I, I think, you know, economically, that, that's a tough sell at this point in time. You may recall, we had some language in our comprehensive plan about trying to have neighborhood services, you know, closer, in closer proximity to the residential areas. And I think it was actually a comment that came back as to, you know, how difficult that is in, in today's marketplace to, you know, for those small, you know, neighborhood-type business areas to survive. You know, and, and I suppose, just to come back to the, we talked a little bit about parking earlier. You know, certainly, we're not a, you know, transit-oriented type community like, you know, Owens Mills or Rockville or, you know, someplace where you really probably don't have to have a car every day, or you might use your car on the weekends, or, you know, one, you know, you may hop on the metro, or yourself may drive to work, something like that. We, in the foreseeable future, are gonna remain car-dependent here in Tonny Town because it's, it's, for most folks, they can't walk to work. They're not gonna walk to high school. They're probably not gonna walk to the grocery store unless they, you know, are at that end of town. So we are in a situation where we do need to think about parking and, you know, and have that, that, you know, we, our experience has been, you know, free cars per dwelling unit works, you know, as, as, as a community goes through its life cycle. You know, there's, there's a point in time where, you know, families grow, kids get their licenses, they get their cars. And you've got, you know, instead of two people having a car, you've got four cars now.
That's right.
You know, but, but three, three spaces per dwelling pretty much works. You know, there are some neighborhoods where it gets tight in the evening, but, but it functions. So, and I did have a discussion with a, a friend who's a planner in the city of Frederick. And even in Frederick, you know, you, you think, you know, it's much more urban than we are. Well, they're still very car-dependent on, on things there. They do have, you know, some, you know, rail connection and paraphrasing and stuff there, but a lot of people in Frederick still, you know, drive down 270 every morning to, to go to work. And they can't, you know, the metro doesn't come up, you know, that far. And it never misses. But, you know, we were talking about parking standards and things like that, and, and my friend was telling me, you know, no, do not reduce your parking. You know, we, we had a townhouse community, and we kinda gave into the pressure to reduce the parking, and actually have complaints ever since we've built it. So, so even in Frederick, in that, you know, urban area, there's still parking. I think we're gonna see parking requirements change.
One of the things that I've just been sitting here thinking about is, what, to me, what's the problem with what we have in front of us here? Is that we write things down, and then things change. The economics change, and you can't do some of these things. I, I tend to lean a whole lot more towards the one-page thing where you sit down and you negotiate every single thing. That way, you're always in tune with what is, what is affordable, what can be done, and what you want. You may not, you know, what you put in here may not what you want ten years. This is ten years down the road. How many of these things are still being, that we want?
One thing that I can't figure out is why people think it's a good idea to do alleys and have rear-loaded lots. I don't understand why. It seems like it's just more of a burden on public works. It's a burden on the police department. What is the attraction to that to begin with?
Well, we talked about that, just about it. It's largely aesthetic. Well, it's a big piece of it, aesthetic. So instead of looking at the, you know, looking at cars in everybody's driveway, you're looking at the architecture, you're looking at the landscaping, you're bringing the houses closer to the road, and, and you're getting the cars out of the view. That's one thing. And you're also providing an area where, you know, the trash cans go in the back instead of the front once a week. I mean, it's little things, but it's, it's, I think, largely an aesthetic. And, and, and it is, it, it is something that is becoming more popular. Now, whether it's the time for that to happen in Tonny Town or not, we've seen with Meads that now is not the time that that's gonna happen in Tonny Town. But that, those were some of the, the, I guess, driving factors at the time. I mean, it's largely aesthetic. It's to make it, you know, to be able to concentrate on what it's gonna look like. That, I, I think that's a big piece of it. So, and again, you know, you can do small lots, you can do townhouses in R6000. So if you aren't, and that's why I keep coming back to, you know, what, what should community village look like? Because you can do all this other stuff. You can do density, you can do townhouses, you can do apartments, you can do little lots. You can narrow the streets to some degree, you know, within our manual, not to the extent of community village, but, you know, so you, you can do all that in other districts. So what makes community village different? So it's, it's, it's largely an aesthetic. It's to make it something, you know, that that community's gonna have its own identity, that it's gonna be, it's gonna look different than, you know, than doing small lots and townhouses in R6000. What is it that's gonna make it look different? And I'm, I'm not talking specifically about Meads, but I just mean in general. And maybe thinking that through will help us when, you know, when Meads is back on the table again, but, that, again, you know, what, what do you guys think it should look like? Because-
Well, I think it more-
Say Mountain Brook Farms comes back, you know, comes alive again. You know, what's, what's gonna-
I can't relate to community village just like Carol Vista.
Just doing an R6000, you know? If, you know, if you don't want to worry about the aesthetic of it, then we should just go and, you know, with our comp plan update, we should be rezoning, you know, updating stuff on the land use map to, to high-density residential.
Well, in community village, I see the open space. I see the, the roadways with more interest in them. And by that, I mean, they're not just straight roads. I mean, they have, you know, kind of a, ooh, what's around the next corner sort of a thing. And that's, that's what you get at Carol Vista. That's why vision's gonna happen at Meads Crossing. They're looking at their plan. You can see that there is an interest to how the roadways are going through. I think that's a lot of what community village is going to be.
I have an issue with landscaping, especially the placement of the trees.
You can hire people for that.
I don't want a tree planted to obstruct my visibility. How do they know where to place these trees when you insist that they have to place trees? Who, who decides where to place trees?
Landscape architect.
What'd you say, Jim?
I said landscape architect.
I know they do, but how do they know where to put them?
That's their job.
And they'll put them, and then you make a decision.
They're really smart.
That's why they're, that's why they're special.
I, I really have questions on trees.
Well, I think, I think we've covered this pretty good for the night.
Yeah.
I think, and I think, I think everybody had a good chance to speak what's on their mind.
We'll make some notes, we'll come back.
But I think, I don't think we should give it up.
This requires a lot of talk.
Right, and we, we, right. So it's an ordinance. So it will always be there until we change it. So let's, let's move forward with what we have on the agenda for tonight. I thank everyone for taking the time to read it and the discussion.
Heem Riley, so I'm gonna leave Riley.
All right, so, um, let's go to round, Henry have anything?
I think-
Jay, we cut it, anyone from the floor have anything? Marvin?
My wife says by hearing you get to bed, she was talking about changing commercial buildings to rental units, I'll be about what you said, is right. I don't think if, if these landlords made an investment that has turned sour, they can't get a good return on that property. I don't think it's the government's place to change the regulations to make sure their investment is a good one.
I think you need to be more specific.
If they've made a bad investment, still be, they'll now, by changing your regulations.
Did somebody change the reg-
Well, I don't, I think the issue is that we don't have anything to cover it. It's not in the ordinance, so it's not covered, right? The parking, we were talking about the parking, I understand what you're saying, and I can, I agree a hundred percent. We shouldn't modify something to suit someone. But if it's, if, if the occasion comes up, then we need to have something as a guideline or an ordinance to follow.
If, if you live where I live and see what's hurting downtown businesses, in my opinion, with the tenants downtown, and you're gonna put more tenants downtown, you're not doing anything for, you're, it's a gift of that to, to the business community. It's almost in now. That's gonna, that's gonna do it, believe me. Because of the situation near me, I don't understand why these businesses don't complain about it. Because who wants to walk the streets by that kind of a situation? You go into somebody's-
Marvin, do you see how many of the, do you see how many of the businesses sit in front of their own business? Have you watched that?
You can have Saturday-
You watch that? Every one of them is parked in front of their building.
Agreed.
Every one of them.
Before noon, these people was all dropped off or doped off, hollering as loud as they could to someone down near the railroad track. And they were, that code back then, actually sounded like hog squeals. Not exactly like hog squeals because they had ended with it. And you expect people to stop here and go to business? And you can't do nothing about that?
Marvin, I, I'm really not sure that that's the real issue here. I think the issue is, we, because of, we have discovered a hole in the system. And the hole, if it's not fixed, will allow that to happen, converting some commercials to residential. So the goal, I think, is to kind of address it. Do we want that to happen or not? We need to fix it.
Let's say you don't keep that in mind, you don't need any more tenants downtown, what's happening now?
To Ali's point, I completely agree. Driving down, I see more of the business owners' cars parked right in front of their business than customer cars. And they're the first people- And they're the first people in here complaining about parking, and they're taking up all the good spots in front of their own business.
And they are doing it.
You know what I was told?
They want it to look like there's people there.
Yeah, the reason they do that is they want their business to look as if somebody's in it.
Come on.
When you have four or five cars parked in the traffic lane waiting for the late change, and they're parked right where this activity's going on, what kind of an image does that have for downtown Tony Town? And you're trying to build a business community, and it'll work.
We're still trying.
All right.
We're still trying.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Marvin. George?
No, I don't have anything.
Nothing, sir.
Anything? Ollie, Jim? All right, the next meeting is scheduled for October 31st. Trick or treating.
It's Halloween, can we not?
So are we doing it then, or we wanna go to the week before, or?
I'd like to do week before, if we could.
I was gonna come in costume.
Yeah.
I thought you had it on.
You can do a Halloween, come in costume.
I pretend I'm a lawyer. You haven't, you haven't watched, you haven't watched the counseling.
Are you a lawyer? Just because you charge that rate, that doesn't make you a lawyer.
I've heard that somewhere.
I should have guessed here. All right, so are we looking like October 24th, does that work?
Yeah, it's good.
Pardon me?
It's good.
It good?
Watch some of these at home.
What's that? I live them in real life, what are you talking about?
I knew you'd be watching them on your.
Okay, if not having anything else before us, I'll entertain a motion.
Is that moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those favors, sing a clap, say an aye.
Aye.
Moves likewise. Thank you.